Good evening, everybody. I apologize for being a little bit late in our start time tonight. We did have an earlier meeting that ran a little bit over. But I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Wausau Board of Education on Monday, June 14th. It is 6:12 PM. Ms. Peck?
Jim Boucher?
Here.
John Creacher?
Here.
Kyle Low?
Here.
Pat McKee?
Here.
Cody Nicolai?
Jane Roos?
Here.
Lance Trollop?
Here.
Anna Karen Vanneker?
Here.
Lee Webster?
Here.
All right, if we'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. Okay, we are on to item five, public and student comment. We do have one individual signed up for this tonight. And just a reminder that if you would please state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to make your comment, and Clerk Peck will show you the time as you progress through your statement. Speakers do bear, shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Public comments identifying specific personnel or students by name or through the use of sufficiently detailed descriptions so as to identify the individual or student referenced are not appropriate subjects. Speakers do bear the personal risk if anything he or she says during a public comment period is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to other, to another individual. All right, having said that, our speaker tonight, Quincy Casper.
Thank you, members of the board, for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to talk to you guys about an issue that developed with my children at one of the local elementary schools. This, oh, I apologize. Quincy Casper, 609 Broadway Avenue, Wausau, Wisconsin, 54403. There were two incidences here that occurred with my children that caused some concern. The first one involved the Good News Club. This happened about a year and a half ago. Unfortunately, I did not find out about it until summer vacation, and afterwards I did direct it towards the principal that there was an issue once I had found out. The issue was that the permission slips went home. My family is pagan. We don't believe in Christianity. We don't want our kids being taught that, so I denied permission. During the summer, I discovered that one of my children was wearing a WWJD bracelet. So I asked him about it, and he informed me that he was able to attend the Good News Club during breakfast time, and he learned all about how Jesus Christ saved our souls and died for our sins, and sat there and preached to me for about 10 minutes. The second issue was then shortly after the school board here voted to get rid of the mask policy or that it was optional once outside, we informed our children that once they got outside of the school to remove their mask, and that if anybody said anything to them, to let them know to please call mommy or daddy. I don't teach my children to argue with teachers. I don't teach my children to argue with any adult. They should do what they're supposed to do in the school district, and I firmly believe that. It's my job to argue on their behalf when I feel necessary, which is why I'm here. My son came home from school upset, the third-to-last day of school, and he was upset because he'd gotten yelled at. So I asked him what he had done. Why, why did you get yelled at? His response was that he got yelled at because he took his mask off once he exited the school building. I asked him, did you tell the teacher to call mommy or daddy? The teacher he named, I do not believe, used these exact words, but regardless, the message he came home with was, I don't care what mommy or daddy think. This is the rules. Now, these two incidences point out a serious flaw. Either the school is not caring about the message that is transitioning to the house, and they're not caring about my opinions, or they're not being responsible enough to monitor my children while in their care. These two things are unacceptable to me. I need to know that when my child is in school, that he is receiving a proper education, that he is being properly watched after, and that he is where he, I expect him to be, not that he's going to get a message. Now, these two incidences have taught him that it doesn't matter what his parents say because I told him that they could not do the Good News Club. I told him to do these things, and his response now is that the school doesn't care and that the school tells them what to do instead. I would like to know what the board can do to solve these situations. If it's a lack of funding to get more people in there because you need more staff, fine, I'll join you and I will fight on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Okay, we are now on to item number six, approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes appointments of additional staff, replacement staff, or contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, or terminations, leaves of absence, retirement, minutes from the regular session of May 10th, 2021, and special session of May 17th, 2021, payment of the bills, budget status, and investment reports, donations to the district this month, which include Brayton Dahlpert, Lorraine Horning, Aspiris Wausau Hospital, Trauma Center, Duncan, Sue Growing Supply, QuickTrip, Master Gardeners at the UW Extension, Marathon County, Walgreens, Safe Kids, Parent Guardian of Nick Wenzlick, El Mezcal, Dennis Lang, La Prima Delli, Pick 'n Save, United Way, Wausau Noon Optimist, Wausau Youth Baseball and Softball, 2080 Media, GPM Southeast, the Law Office of Mary Sue Anderson, Kay Lockwood, MC, I think it's, MC Lacrosse Incorporated, Glenn Peters, Michael Hillmeyer, and Linda Krenz. So I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude to the donations from the aforementioned to the district.
So moved.
Second.
First by Ms. Roos, second by Mr. Webster. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, on to item number seven, Education and Operations Committee meeting. This is going to be a recommendation for the preliminary 2021-2022 budget. Just a call out from a procedural standpoint, you guys, everyone should notice that we do have estimated times to present back on the agendas. Well, obviously, these are not hard and fast. We do want to provide some type of guardrails, and obviously, this is without board questions or, or discussion thereafter, but did receive several questions, comments about, you know, how can we tighten things up? How can we continue to make it more efficient? And thought that adding back the, the estimated times to present would give people a better idea on what to expect for each topic, so just wanted to point that out, having said that. Bob?
The budget that was presented at the Education Operations Committee meeting was the entire presentation, and as is typical at the board meeting to follow, we don't say much unless there are questions that are still hanging over from that previous meeting, so even though it says five minutes estimated time, we can reduce that to about 30 seconds of presentation at least, but I'll certainly answer any questions that you have.
Have you heard anything development-wise, positive, negative, that you could?
A lot of developments. I was actually on a statewide legislative committee meeting today, talking about what we can expect from the legislature and the governor, and we know that there's divided government right now, and sometimes that's really helpful, but because it keeps crazy stuff from happening, but sometimes gridlock gets in the way. So not quite sure what's being discussed right now is the GOP presenting something that will maintain the federal ESER funding, and I get a little bit nervous about that. If we had something that were passed into budget that would sacrifice all of the ESER money, and the Republicans I've talked to said that's not going to happen, the stakes are just too high to have that happen. So it's going to be a little bit of a waiting game. It might go into July and maybe even beyond that, but we're not going to have a final budget for a little while.
Okay.
I think we have a budget built that allows for some flexibility. No matter what comes out of Madison, I think we're going to be okay.
All right. Any other questions? Anyone have questions for Bob?
I'd only make one, one comment. Bob, I appreciate what you're telling us because it's about the same thing that we heard at the WAS meeting this past weekend, that the two, the House and the Senate and the governor need to get together, or we're going to, we're not going to see that federal money, and that has to be resolved at their level. So we are in a waiting game, it seems, all the way across the state.
Okay. All right, with no other questions, I am seeking a motion to approve the preliminary budgets as presented in order to proceed with 2021-2022 expenditures committed to before final budgets are approved.
So moved.
Second.
All right, first from Ms. Vanderburg, second from Mr. Boucher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? That motion passes. Thank you, Bob. And on to the next one, the approval of our 10-year capital improvement plan.
Sure, this one says five minutes also. Last time I presented this one, there was a little bit of a question about broadband internet access and infrastructure, and we discussed it, and we thought it best if we didn't put infrastructure in because that suggests, maybe casually, that that's our responsibility, that broadband access, not just for our families and not just for our students, that's probably a governmental duty to provide broadband for everybody. We are working on our internal infrastructure. You're going to hear a little bit more from John Uding later on in accessing ESER and accessing E-Rate funding and some of those things, and if we did see something that we wanted to access Fund 46 for, according to DPI, we can change that 10-year capital improvement plan immediately, and we can change it right then and there and make that improvement. We make notes throughout the year what it's going to look like next year. When we bring that 10-year capital improvement plan next year, we can add that.
All right. Any follow-up questions for Bob? Okay, hearing none. Seeking a motion for approval of the 10-year capital improvement plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, first from Ms. Roos, second from Mr. Trollop. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Bob, and the last on this old recurring business, the transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 46.
Sure, this one is categorization or reclassification of fund balance. So instead of leaving fund balance in Fund 10, we're putting it in Fund 46 in an effort to leverage state aid, and we get aid on it by making that transfer. And this is a year when our shared costs did go down a little bit because of our dependence on ESER, including a couple other things, so this is just a way to stabilize that aid payment.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Seeking a motion to approve the transfer of $1 million from the General Fund to the Long-Term Capital Improvement Trust Fund during the 2021, 2020-2021 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
All right, first by Mr. Webster, and I think it was a second by Jane, Ms. Roos. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Tess. Okay, on to new business. The first item on new business will be a public hearing to consider submitting requests to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to waive the instructional hours requirement due to the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency. Public comment for the public hearing will be accepted in person and via email until the conclusion of the public hearing portion. Public comment for the public hearing may be emailed to cpac@wassaschools.org with "public hearing comments" quote in the subject line. Dr. Hiltz will be presenting to us on this subject.
Thank you. So for, for those who aren't aware, there are some required hours of instruction, the elementary and secondary levels. That's shared to us, and it kind, and we're held accountable to the Department of Public Instruction for that. With the schedule changes that were approved for last year, namely the Fridays that were used to support virtual learning and do team planning, we did not meet those hours. So that's one item that we would like to submit an application for a waiver. And the second was for educator effectiveness. Educator effectiveness is the, the evaluation tool that we use for all certified staff. It's a, it's a robust format. It includes, you know, personal reflections, data reviews, goal setting, data collection, observations, artifact collection, observations, conversations, and then a summary. It's a, it's a very robust process, requires a lot of time, and in this year, we really wanted our certified staff, our teachers and principals to, to be able to plan and react quickly to the needs of students and families. So that was the reason for the change in the schedule. That was the reason for the, the pausing, if you will, of the educator effectiveness evaluation program, and so tonight, I would be asking the board to approve the resolution so that I could submit the, the waiver application to the Department of Public Instruction.
Okay. All right, questions for Dr. Hiltz?
Question, but just a, a comment, just to remind, and I guess it's new for the new board members. We talked about this back when we decided to alter the schedule, and we were essentially advised by DPI at that time that they would be approving these for districts this year, so this isn't a surprise to us. We knew this was going to happen.
Dr. Hiltz, are you able to share, like, when you submit this request, do you have to submit what our actual instructional hours were at those, you know, the secondary level, 7 through 12, and then the 1 through 6, and then, and we all know what the standards are for DPI, but I'm just wondering, do you have to submit what those actual numbers were, or just that we did not meet them?
Correct, just that we did not meet them. What the, what the department is looking for is that we offered the community an opportunity to comment, and that the board is approving of the waiver application.
We did not receive any public comment in person and none via email.
Okay. All right, let the record show, we received no public comment on this particular item. So we will move to item number two, which is approval of the resolution to submit a request to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to waive instructional hours So you have a formal resolution that we have to read or?
It's written, it's...
It's attached.
Yeah, it's attached.
I doubt you want to read it.
Okay, I've got it here.
Is it on Ms. Peck?
Yes.
It's not attached on the agenda, but I thought there's a hard copy here.
I've got it. Should I read the whole thing for everyone? I'm not, I'm not required to?
It's not required. I think if you say, we'd look for a motion, a second, and a vote on the resolution as posted.
Okay, that sounds good. So seeking a motion to approve the resolution, the resolution to submit a request to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to waive instructional hours requirement, the resolution is attached in the agenda, and this will be a roll call vote.
So moved.
So, yeah, so moved. Second.
All right, first by Mr. Trollop, second by Mr. Boucher. Cassie?
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
John Creacher?
Yes.
Kyle Low?
Yes.
Jane Roos?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Karen Vanneker?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
80.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the next item, technology infrastructure update. Mr. Uding will share a technology update per the request of the board from the May Ed Ops Committee meeting.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to tell you a little bit about where we're at now with regard to our infrastructure and the broadband and the connectivity we provide to all of our students and staff. So I think just a general overview here of what you all have, the current status, and what we really look at for our connectivity is the FCC would recommend that every school district provide an internet connection of at least one megabyte per student in the district. And when we look at the Wausau School District, we provide 1.34 megabytes per student on average across the district, so we exceed the FCC recommended connectivity per student in our district, which really positions us well for the future and where we're at with our students. The next benchmark is the FCC recommends 10 megabytes per students when you look internally. So the first one is bringing the internet to our firewall, and that's where we want to have at least one megabyte per student. This next number is the bandwidth that's available to students and devices to communicate within the network itself, and that's really between sites and between the sites and mob and, and those, and those access points. And when you look at the district as a whole, that 10 megabyte is the recommended number in a media-rich environment, one that's leveraging live streaming and video and all the things that we're currently doing. We average 29.5 across the district. You simply take the connection to that site and divide it by the number of students, and then you come up with that FCC recommended number. So we are very well positioned at, at all sites for the immediate and the present, but also moving into the future, and it will take a long time to get some of our sites maxed out because we're already doing the things that the FCC would say you need a media-rich environment. There are some sites that, as we get into our replacement cycle, we can even improve that connectivity or that number at individual sites. So an example would be, Cassie, if you would please click on current status, back one there. So that slide there shows you where we're at on an individual site basis. So when I talk about hardware replacement, you would see Franklin's at just over 10. That's, that's a site that would be coming up in a replacement cycle and allow us to upgrade the equipment to provide greater bandwidth to those students. Now, that 10 megabytes per student is if every student is on the network at the exact time, fully leveraging it. That doesn't happen, and so it might look like, oh, we should be at 10 minutes, really 10.09. We are very well positioned in that site, and even East in EEA you see is the same. Hewitt, Texas, again, is the anomaly. It's our only point-to-point, so we broadcast our internet, and we are upgrading that come July 1 with E-Rate funding. So before I go a little bit further, I don't know if there are questions on this slide?
I'm sorry. Can you state that again, please? So Franklin is at 10, Wausau East is at 10. The difference between any, those two schools and Rib Mountain at 43 is what specifically?
The difference would be the, let's see, Franklin and East and Rib Mountain are all on the can. It's the size of the group and the individual connectivity, the equipment and the connection and the student sizes. So there are differing student sizes at each building. I believe, Cassie, could you go to the next slide? So if we look here, East has a 10-gig connection, and so does Franklin, so they have the same connection, different sizes, and I see what you're getting at with, I will get you the more specific answer when I talk with Mike Laporte about where we got with that. So you're, what I hear you saying, Pat, is Franklin's at 10 gig, so is East. How could they be both at 10, 10 megs per student with the student population? Is that the, the correct question that you're asking?
Right, because, you know, somewhere in here, there is a, there needs to be, and maybe this is where you're going with it, but there should be a plan that says Franklin's at 10, the roadmap to get them from 10 to whatever our target is, 100, or, you know, even though we're above the FCC, I think that's kind of irrelevant. Whatever that target is, here's what we have to do to get from A to B.
Right. And what that, where that comes into play is our equipment and replacement cycle, so some of that will do with the switches and the hardware that we replace every five to seven years. So if we need a bigger port to allow more bandwidth in, the next time we replace Franklin, they would get an upgraded switch that would then change that number.
In that, in terms of life cycle, to get everyone upgraded, because my, my concern is this, and, and maybe it's unfounded, but in the technology space, you know this better than I do, right? If, if we're on a five-to-seven-year life cycle, we're always going to be behind five to seven years in a certain number of buildings. Like, what would it take for the Big Bang to get everybody up to speed on the latest and greatest infrastructure? We don't have to answer that now?
No, I, I see what you're saying, and I think our five-to-seven-year cycle takes individual buildings, so we have a manageable replacement cycle, and we don't have to do that giant Big Bang every five years. So Franklin and Horace Mann and East are some of the, they're furthest down that replacement cycle, so they would be next up in those switches. So we're ahead of the game now, and the replacement cycle will keep us ahead of that game.
Okay.
Is that?
I think, I think so, and that's fine. We, we can take this offline, too, but that, that's helpful. Thank you.
Our, our replacement cycle is planned to be financially doable and keep, and keep the buildings ahead of the game before their equipment phases out or reaches end of support. So we want to maximize that, and then when we replace it, then we look at the need and where we want to be with that. So there, there isn't necessarily one point where we do everybody all at the same time.
Any of the ESER funds allotted for this type of improvement?
No, and let me explain why. Let me go, let me go back. So if you go back, Cassie, to, go to the next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry. The second slide in funding. There we go. So we could use ESER funds to replace some of our hardware infrastructure. That's certainly an allowable function of those dollars. Where we really keep our replacement cycle current is with E-Rate. So the federal government gives us a pot of money that we can use over five years specifically and only for hardware or the burying of fiber or the transmission of data. So that money can only be used for access points, switches, infrastructure, firewall, but not the service contract. So that's where we put that money to, and that's that five-to-seven-year cycle. So we could put ESER funds in there, but E-Rate is the more appropriate ongoing funding source for those pieces of equipment. We could use ESER funds, for example, to replace student devices or teacher devices or class, not necessarily classroom displays, but other instructional tools that more directly and immediately touch students and their learning. E-Rate is designed for infrastructure upgrades, and that's, that's where we go to look at that. If we fall short in our E-Rate funding, which we won't, we could go to ESER for some of that.
Thank you.
To be honest, sometimes it's difficult to spend all of the E-Rate funds because it's a five-year cycle, and equipment's not out of date necessarily all the time in that five-to-seven-year cycle. Does that answer that question?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Jeff, is it, is it correct that you could petition to increase the E-Rate for a given year if you had a need at a certain amount of schools?
That's a good question. Jim, I, I don't know. I've not had the need to petition it. I know we get the pool of money, and it really is allocated on a per-building basis, and you need to watch the dollar amounts at each building, so you'd really have to... the dollar amounts at each building. Um, so you'd really have to petition on an individual building basis to say Franklin's out of funds and we need to have more dollars there. I think what we would do in this context, if that happened, uh, we would look to use some of the ESER funds for that.
Me may want to look into the idea of petitioning for more because if some of these schools are going to need, uh, that E-rate increased in order to take care of all the needs that they have, uh, you know, otherwise, we're going to be sitting there and our students aren't going to get the benefit of that.
And I think I agree with that. I, I clearly don't, but I want to reassure you, we are not at that point. The infrastructure within our schools is state-of-the-art and it's class. We are not falling behind in that infrastructure. Uh, there's nothing that's failing in that infrastructure that's preventing kids from getting any of that. Our goal with the five-year plan and E-rate is to prevent exactly what you're talking about. Um, regularly, when Mike Laporte and I talk about this, it comes up, it's like, well, we could replace these, but realistically, they've, these devices, access points, have another two years in them, and we would be replacing very good, very well-functioning and maintained equipment. So we have done everything we can to keep it moving forward in a fundable, uh, replenishable, replacement cycle with that. So we don't find ourselves in a position where we have to ask for additional monies or funds. There are things, excuse me, the other things with funding, uh, we talked about ESER, and there's a new funding source that's coming out. It's called ECF, the Emergency Contingency Fund, or Connectivity Fund. Uh, they're still developing the guidelines around that, but it's basically E-rate, but it will allow us to submit, uh, reimbursement for hotspots or any kind of connectivity you provide to families, which previously was not reimbursable. So what that would do, once that, uh, application is open, it would allow us to take those dollars that we have allocated for hotspots in ESER, take them out, receive reimbursement through the ECF program, and use those dollars in ESER for something else along those lines. So those are the, the four big sources right now. The Technology Department budget, which funds all the one-to-one devices and other instructional tools, and then E-rate takes care of that, uh, infrastructure aspect of it, as well as our, uh, connection with, uh, Spectrum and Wiscnet and things like that. We've leveraged E-rate over the last six years to bring more and more schools onto the CAN, the Wasau Community Area Network, so we utilize them for access and don't necessarily have to contract with Charter for those sites. And I believe there are four sites right now that are not a part of the CAN due to distance and cost and just return on investment.
Obviously, Hewitt, Texas is way out, and what, uh, can or is being done to improve the service there?
Yeah, so, so Hewitt, Texas has always been a challenge in providing, uh, high degrees of, of, of access for them. Like we had said before, they have a radio system, so it actually shoots through a series of towers from MAB to Tom Field, I believe, and then out to, um, Hewitt, Texas. So right now, we're upgrading that radio system to get them up to about 700 megabytes, uh, of a, of a direct connection, but given the student population and staff population out there, they're still well beyond that, that 10, I believe. I'd have to look, maybe it's right around that 10, 10 megabyte. Our other option would be to take a look at a fiber build, but when you start talking about a fiber build, that's going to go 12, 15 miles. Uh, that's a significant, that's a significant cost. So we are constantly monitoring the radio system and upgrading that to make sure that we have the best possible connection for them out there until there's another option with that. Cassie, want to go back to the overview slide and see where we're at? So we talked a lot about the replacement cycle already, and it really depends upon the device and the piece of equipment we're talking about. Our student devices are replaced on a four-year cycle. Staff devices are replaced on a five-year cycle. So this MacBook will be replaced in another three years. So we're, we're doing short-term replacements, impartial replacements, to avoid large, large outputs of financial, of funds. Uh, it just makes it more manageable, and then we can keep it within the Technology Department budget. The Chromebooks for students is a good example. We replace, uh, roughly 20% of that fleet every year, and that just comes directly out of the Technology Department budget for those. So a couple of things, just, uh, quick overviews. If you look through that, you saw some of the upcoming projects. The big one will be, uh, the classroom displays, and we've got a leadership team taking a look at that. Uh, we recently learned that its learning, uh, will honor our contract for the next two years, but they will not be offering new contracts in the United States. They're going to focus in Europe. Uh, so our leadership team will spend a year or as long as they need evaluating a new learning management system for the district, and that leadership team is teachers and principals from every building. Um, a couple of the other things, we're looking at upgrading the camera system, and, uh, one of the things that we're really dipping our toe into is Microsoft Azure to allow us to address some, uh, security issues as well as some single sign-on options, single sign-on, uh, for students and staff. We're also working closely with the HR department to do more automation with the creation of staff accounts as well as the deactivation of staff accounts. Uh, the next slide? Yes?
I'm wondering, we're talking about how expensive it would be to properly upgrade Hewitt, Texas. We always get all these promises at election time that they're going to expand broadband into the rural areas. If they would actually follow through, would that bring down the cost to upgrade Hewitt, Texas?
Potentially. If they bury some fiber out there and we can get access to that, uh, give me two months and I can give you a better answer of that because I just, uh, was invited to join the Marathon County Broadband Task Force, and I think our first meeting, my first meeting with that will be on the 21st, so I hope to have some more information around that. But yes, if we could access or at least somebody else's fiber out that way, that would, that would take care of that.
Okay. Thanks.
Uh, long-range goals we have and we've been working on, and you can see each one of them are there. What you would then, the next step for this then would probably in September, we've had Sue Engel, one of our librarians, working with the State DPI Task Force, uh, with libraries and media centers and library media plans, which includes a technology piece. So she's been working with them all year, and, uh, so they are finalizing their end of it. We'll bring the district leadership team back into that, and we would bring the comprehensive long-range plan for both technology and library media services back to you in September for an in-depth presentation around those goals and topics. I think I went over my five minutes. I apologize. First time up with a time limit, and I blow by it, but, uh, it's like having too much bandwidth, right? Yes?
Uh, so Microsoft Azure, uh, that's a cloud computing service. Um, do they have their own protections against hacking or, uh, stuff like that, or do we have to do that ourselves?
Well, they have, they have the protections built in, and we've added a couple other things, uh, in there. We, we've changed some of our server configuration to give us a secondary backup with that. It's ours, but yes, they back it up and they have all the protections for that in that aspect. That's a good question.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd be happy to take any other questions.
John? Okay, and that was not an action item, so thank you, Mr. Uding.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item, WIAA membership renewal for 2021, 2022. Dr. Rousher?
Good evening, everyone. We previewed the WIAA membership renewal at the Committee of the Whole meeting, so the only difference tonight is that you have the actual paperwork to take a look at. You'll see there's membership renewals for there are two high schools, our two middle schools, and then our two charter schools, because our students enrolled at our charter schools can participate in all the activities that are available at their home brick-and-mortar high schools.
For Dr. Rousher? Okay, hearing done. Uh, seeking a motion for approval of the WIAA membership renewal for 2021, 2022. First by Mr. Boucher, second by Ms. Rouge. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, and item three under this, uh, various, we have some group wage and salary increases. Tabitha Gundrum will present recommendations for the 2021, 2022 base wage adjustment of 2.15% for administration, administrative and educational support group, maintenance, custodial group, school nutrition services group, and municipal group.
So this is also posted as five minutes, and it should not probably take that long unless you have a lot of questions. Uh, the 2.15 is for all of our non-teacher groups. It is aligned to the same percentage that our teacher group increases are currently costing for next year when that gets implemented. The only reason why you don't see that appear for, uh, review as well as we're just waiting for WEA to do their ratification process, and as soon as that is done, we'll be bringing the teacher increase to you for approval as well. So, does anybody have any questions?
Okay, I guess that's a no. Thank you. All right, I am seeking a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 base wage adjustment of 2.15% for the administration, administrative and educational support group, the maintenance and custodial group, school nutrition services group, and the municipal group.
So move.
All right, first by Mr. Creacher, second by Mr. Boucher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, on to open forum, and we do have five minutes allowed or allotted for each of these. Um, do our best to keep to those. So Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. Any items to speak of?
I'll mention, uh, this, having been at the WAS, uh, board meeting this past weekend, uh, we did have Stephanie Hauser speak to us, uh, from the WIAA. Um, I think she's going to bring a very fresh look at what the WIAA does with athletics. I think that, uh, if I'm not mistaken, she is only the seventh or eighth executive director of the WIAA in the 125, 130 years that the WIAA is in existence. So it's a, a great, uh, choice. She is, which was identified, uh, as the first female to be in that position, and again, that is a positive. She came out of Stevens Point, originally out of Anigo. Uh, she was an athlete herself, an athletic director, and will do a tremendous job for the WIAA.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, um, I would also ask that the liaison, the Board Member Liaison Report be entered into the official record. All right, next up, Ms. Lowe will have our Education Legislative Liaison Report.
Yeah, um, so I don't have a lot. There wasn't a lot going on in the news in regards to education. Um, the big thing was, um, Joint Finance Committee, um, with education funding. Um, so I have a story here from WJFW, um, we're a Democratic legislator and a superintendent up in Florence County. They both agree, um, that, uh, the idea to withhold $350 million was a bad idea. Um, and so, as everyone knows, Florence County is way, way up north, very, very conservative county. Um, so there's both agreement, um, on there, um, regarding the story with school funding. Um, I have another story here, uh, new estimates say Wisconsin could lose $2.4 billion in federal relief money under current school funding plan. Um, so the new estimates show that Wisconsin could lose $2.3 billion in federal coronavirus support for schools if Republican lawmakers don't change their plan for school spending in the next two-year state budget. Um, so for Mr. Tess, that's something important for you. Um, yeah, and so, um, a lot of it was just on school funding with the Joint Finance Committee. Um, and then my last update would be, um, former Governor Scott Walker, um, did join with former Governor Jim Doyle, um, to shoot a commercial encouraging COVID vaccination. Um, so in the story, um, Governor Scott Walker did say, "Let's do a commercial together," reminding people in Wisconsin how important it is to be vaccinated, and then Doyle responds, "That may be the best idea you've ever had." So, so two parties coming together. Um, sounds great. That's all I have.
All right, on to Superintendent Commentary.
Thank you. Uh, I did receive a request from, uh, Dr. Phelps and Ms. Heilmann, the summer school coordinators, uh, just to let the board know that, uh, we started our second week of summer school today. First week went really well, and they wanted to make sure that we publicly thanked everyone for their patience and support as they started so quickly after the school year. They, they mentioned, um, everyone, from the bus drivers to food service to central office and technology staff and teachers and support staff, site coordinators, families, and students. They, uh, look forward to the rest of summer school. Again, they say it started very well, um, and they just wanted to make sure that you had a, a brief update, uh, and, and a public thanks to everyone who made that possible. That's all I've got.
Okay. All right, Presiding Officer Commentary, and we did not plan this, but, um, I, the, the item that I would just like to add, and I, I think this goes without saying, but this is our first meeting since the, since the school year, um, ended, and I just want to say on behalf of the board, a tremendous thank you to administration, to the teachers, um, to our support staff, coaches, custodial, food support folks, bus drivers, crossing guards, um, anybody and everybody, parents. It goes, this year was extremely challenging. We had many rough spots. We had many bright spots. Um, as I sit here today on June 14th, I probably have not been more excited about the future than in the last 15 to 18 months, just given everything that's going on. Um, there is a lot that we have in front of us. Before we know it, September 3rd, I think, is the first day is going to be here. Um, and I know everybody is looking forward to our new normal, whatever that new normal is going to be. Um, but again, just, uh, on behalf of the board, I just want to say thank you to everyone who makes this stuff work, and, uh, the, the board is committed to looking forward and to making sure that we are coming together with all the groups, um, to, to do good things, do great things for this district. So, uh, thank you all very much. Okay, um, I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.